Good afternoon, everybody. We'll bring this regular board meeting for the Socorro District Board of Trustees to order. It is six o'clock. First called order is a pledge of allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance will be read today by Aaron Reyes, Mountwood High School, ninth grade.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Aaron. Next, any gentlemen, superintendent's comments?
Yes, President Gondra and members of the board like to welcome some new individuals to their new roles here in our school district, starting with Mr. Nathan Ballard, new principal of Paso del Norte. Also, we have Ms. Carol Montoya, new director of Human Resources for Staffing and Recruiting. Two new assistant principals at Cybert are Lorena Álvarez and Nadia Castañares. Like to welcome new assistant principal of Socorro High School, Ms. Claudia Carabeo. Where are you at, Claudia? Is Claudia here?
We can clap for her age.
And welcome new assistant principal of Vista de Sol, Ms. Alicia Miranda.
Some no-shows that in.
Yes, I'd like to, again, welcome everyone to their new roles. You're gonna do great in your new roles here in our school district. Congratulations. That concludes my comments. President Gondra.
Okay, let's go down to item number four. Special presentations, Mr. Escobar.
Good evening, President Gondra, members of the board, and Dr. Espinoza. My name is Daniel Escobar, chief communications officer for the district, and it is my pleasure to introduce tonight's recognitions. If you'll please step down to receive our honorees. It is with great pleasure that I introduce an exceptional group of educators who have dedicated many years of service to Team SISD and its students, our 2016 retirees. The retiring employees will receive a personalized photo collage to commemorate their time in the district and a lifetime activity pass to enter sporting events for free from here on out with Team SISD. It is a privilege to recognize our retirees. These outstanding individuals have been vital members of Team SISD and loyal educators of our children. During their time in SISD, they have educated thousands of students, offered guidance and support, and led the path to endless opportunities for our children. We appreciate their longtime commitment to Team SISD and wish them well during their retirement. Our first recognition is for Shirley Grebe from Americas High School. She has been a member of Team SISD for 20 years. After retirement, she plans to relax, enjoy life, and spend time with her grandchildren. And just a quick note for the family members in the audience, that the photos taken by our district photographer will be posted on our district website on our SmugMug account, where they are available for free high-resolution download. Congratulations once again. Next, we have Ron Dirks, director of athletics. Coach Dirks said he will miss the fellowship and friendship of the people in Team SISD Congratulations again, coach. Next, we have Martha Samaripa, a teacher from Benito Martinez. Ms. Samaripa's fondest memory of SISD is teaching her students and their beautiful smiles. She will miss seeing a line of little ones following her every morning into the classroom. Congratulations once again. Next, join us in recognizing Irene Solis, a teacher from Bill Cybert School. Mrs. Solis has been a proud member of Team SISD for 36 years. One of her greatest memories while in SISD has been witnessing the district's growth and seeing it evolve from two campuses, as we heard earlier in Dr. Espinoza's presentation, Congratulations once again. Next is Maria Luisa Flores from Food Services at Colonel John Enzer Middle School. Her daughter Jessica Flores is here to accept on her behalf. Mrs. Flores plans to keep busy traveling and visiting family during her retirement. She says she is grateful to have learned something new every day from children at Our next recognition is for Antonio Candelaria from Technology Services. Mr. Candelaria worked in SISD for 25 years. One of his greatest memories was installing new technology devices at the schools and seeing the look on students' and teachers' faces as they eagerly awaited the opportunity Next, we have Elizabeth Erera, a teacher at Dr. Sushuk Elementary. Ms. Erera plans to continue being an active member of Team SISD by volunteering at her granddaughter's school. She will miss the memories she shared with SISD students, teachers, administrators, friends, Next, we have Kendah Vega, teacher at Ernesto Serna School. Since her retirement, Mrs. Vega has traveled to Canada and Alaska in her RV. She said she plans to rest and relax before she goes back to schools and helps tutor students. Our next recognition is for Elsie Olguina, teacher at Escondrias Elementary. Mrs. Olguina has served in SISD for 30 years. One of her special memories was seeing one of her first-grade students graduate as a Congratulations once again. Next, we have Ricardo Damián, assistant principal at Keys Academy. Mr. Damián has been with SISD for 33 years. He will always cherish his time with SISD and serving the Serna and overall Team SISD Our next recognition is for Rosa María Duarte from Loma Verde Elementary. Ms. Duarte feels honored to have had the opportunity to work with different grade-level students and teachers who made her feel appreciated. Congratulations once again. Our next honoree is Lori Rodríguez, a teacher at Mountwood High School. Mrs. Rodríguez has dedicated 34 years to the district. Her colleagues describe her as a dedicated person who believes in always doing her best. Next is Corina Martinez, teacher at Myrtle Cooper Elementary School. Ms. Martinez has been with SISD for 26 years. One of her greatest moments as an educator was seeing her former students return to school with their children and say, "Hey, that's Mrs. Martinez. Next is Ignacio Reyes from Options High School. Mr. Reyes has served in the district for 31 years. His colleagues have expressed he is a team player and works above and beyond, always Next, we have Manuel Castañeda from Police Services. Mr. Castañeda enjoyed walking with the students, talking to the teachers and administrators, as well as attending after-school events and meetings with parents. Congratulations once again. Our next honoree is Ana Guerrero Moncada, student activities coordinator for Socorro Mrs. Moncada dedicated 27 years of service to Socorro High School. She will always remember the excitement from the audience when her dance team, the Missionettes, Next is María Delgado, a crossguard from William D. Slider Middle School. Mrs. Delgado says watching the students grow over the years is a special memory that Next is Esser González, principal from H.D. Healy Elementary. Mrs. González has been an employee for Team SISD for 30 years. She will miss all the students and friends that she has made over the years in Team SISD. And our final honoree for tonight is Robert Rodríguez from Transportation. Mr. Rodríguez celebrated 32 years working in Socorro ISD as a bus driver, making sure that our students were safe getting to and from school, as well as various activities So on behalf of everyone in Socorro ISD, we wish you the best in your retirement and appreciate your dedication, commitment, and unwavering support to Team SISD. If we can have just one more round of applause for all of our retirees. And that concludes our recognitions for this evening.
Test, test.
Test, test.
Hello, just real quick before, we do have an honored guest sitting on this out there, Mrs. Guerrero. She was a...
This is Rosa Guerrero.
Mrs. Rosa Guerrero, she's right there, Mrs. Guerrero. We really thank you for being out here today. Item five, open forum. We did not have anybody sign up for open forums, so let's go on to item number six, district reports, facility report.
Good evening, President Gondra, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board. My report begins on page eight. Let me see if I got some... The first three projects, of course, you're all aware, are the HVAC projects at Sanchez, Socorro Middle, and Slider. These all, these projects are basically complete. We are working with the punch list. We are making a few adjustments here and there on some equipment. And we have our roofs finally going to be accepted by the manufacturers. If they weren't done last week, they're going to be done in the next couple of weeks and should be able to finalize these projects here in the next couple of months to close out these projects as a part of the 2011 bond program. With this and a couple of the other projects that we are closing out, Mission Ridge, Purple Heart, and Pebble Hills, will bring the final closure of the 2011 bond program, at which time I am shooting for either August, probably more likely September to give you a final report on where we stand with the 2011 bond program and the remaining bond savings on those, on those projects at that time. The Options High School, Region 19 Child Development Center, that was completed. You saw some finished photographs of it last month. Tomorrow, there is an open house at the center to kind of kick, kick the facility off. Everything has been moved in, furniture. We've, we've occupied it. We've had some walkthrough. Region 19 is staffing up for it, so that project is completed. The football field and lighting and bleacher upgrades at Eldorado, Americas, and Mountwood are coming to their final stages. We had one issue with one light at Eldorado High School. We've worked that out. We've solved that, and the rest of the projects will be finishing up. In fact, next week, Musco, who is the manufacturer of the lighting system, will be in town to do, to take readings on the fields. That's basically when we turn them on at night and basically determine if the lights are properly aligned and take our foot candle levels. So, once that is done, we'll get a report, and the football field's lights and everything are up and running, and we're just doing some minor work to the bleachers. We're doing some sidewalks at Mountwood, some of the final sidewalks. Same thing at Americas, finalizing the bleachers, and then the actual source to turn the service to the poles will be completed. And at Eldorado High School, we had to relocate the long jump and the pole vault pits, so those will be completed here in the next week or so. And those, those three projects will be completed. Our next project is through the committed fund, no, actually, this is from the 2004 bond program, is the access road to transportation. The board awarded that last month. It's a short construction period, 189 days, I believe, so it should be finalizing up here in the next couple of months. We have hopefully a little bit better picture in the book and on the diagram that shows the road a little bit better. But if you drive out here, you can see the actual construction where it's going to tie in to where there is a median cut in Rojas. We do have an issue with an electrical, El Paso electric light pole is sitting right where our road is going to be, so we're negotiating to get that moved and, you know, so we can have that road completed. We've done it in phases. We've done all the striping and for the parking lot and all that has been completed because bus drivers have been showing up, and of course, school starts Monday. We will complete the road here in the next couple of months. The HVAC upgrade at Score High School is completed. They, they are functional. I've been out to school a couple of times the last two weeks, and they are, they are working. We're just doing some remaining, some punch list items on them, and we are asking to put some fans in the corridors. The wings have been air-conditioned, but I think we'll need some type of cooling in the corridors, but we're gonna hopefully see if...
Oh, the classrooms are fine, Mr. Ayington?
The classrooms are fine, and we did not touch any of the contingency, and we had a construction, well, this wasn't a CMR, this was competitive proposal, but there was something in the bid that we did not have to use, so we'll get additional money back for that. And I'll, I'll have that final number once we do the paperwork on that. So, we do have money coming back, and that is a committed fund project. And then the electronic video board at the SAC, it's, I'd say, 90% complete. Was out there twice on Saturday. They were just beginning to install it early in the morning, and then went back out there right after lunch, and they had one, one panel up. And today, they were installing the speaker system. So that is your video board in place right now, the big black area. You can see that it expanded over the existing opening. All the control wires and everything have been pulled to the press box, and our training is scheduled for next week, the end of next week. So, that board is going to be up and running for our first games, which is August the 25th. And then the facility assessment, land use analysis, and demographic study, we had the board workshop... board workshop last month, or, I mean, a couple of weeks ago, and I mentioned that we have an appendix, it's not as thick as I thought it would be, but it, it does cover over 360 pages. I do have it downloaded onto our system, once I figure out how to get you that information for you to pull it up electronically. I do have some copies that are, are hard copies, so if any of y'all would like to look at that, I do have a copy of it, but I'll send you the link if you want to pull up the electronic file. And that should conclude my report.
Any questions from Strangton?
Mr. Ayington, on the, the land use and facilities, when do you anticipate another workshop for an update?
That is August the 10th.
Well, I thought that was for boundaries.
Well, that's going to be kind of tied in together. We're going to make, actually meet with them on the week before, next week, on the second, I believe, and kind of just internally review that, but we tied the two together for the 10th, then we can schedule another one in the future.
But, I don't know if the board would like that, but I think we probably need to, because I'm not, I, I'm not sure we were able to get to all the numbers last time, and maybe we need to review those again.
When they come in next week, I'll, I'll get some dates, and, do you want it at a board workshop or a board meeting, or?
Board workshop.
Okay, I will get some dates for y'all to consider.
And, Mr. Ayington, the link, when do you anticipate us being able to get that?
I should have it by the end of this week. It's already, it's downloaded on, into my computer and stuff, I just got it, you know, it's a pretty lengthy, or thick file, or whatever you want to call it, technology, I can't, you know, but it, I just can't email it to you. I don't think I can just email.
Well, we can just get it on a disk, or-
We could do that, yeah, we could do it on a disk, if you want it on a disk, that would probably be easier.
Either way, either way, just so that we can access it and have a look at the other assessment part that we did go over during the board workshop.
It's just too big to email, you know, so-
No, no, and that's, and that's fine, you know, whether we get it on a disk or a thumb drive, that's perfectly fine.
Okay, we can, we can do that, I can have you a copy of it probably for this Friday package.
That'll be perfect, perfect.
Mr. Ayton?
Mr. Ayton, is part of the, now, you said the AC project at Socorro High School is done?
Yes, sir.
Is part of the punch list, are you going to have an opportunity to do some temperature checks in the classrooms and in the hallways? You know, because if there's even a little variation, if somebody asks, we have done those, and, and this is what we've got right now, in the hottest and humidest time of the year right now. Will you be able to do that?
Yes, sir, we'll be able to do that, yes, sir, we'll do that.
That'd be great, thank you.
Any more questions? Strangton, I do have one on the driveway, do we foresee any problems with the existing Arroyo that's right there?
We are working with the PSP, the Public Service Board, we talking about this behind us?
No, no, the one right next to it, the driveway that you're making.
No, we shouldn't, because that was all considering, taken in consideration, that's, that's, that's really a little bit further over.
Just a little bit further down.
Yeah, we have some retainage areas, I don't know.
And the only reason I ask, because you know, you know, it really doesn't rain much here, but when it does, that, one day that it does, it takes everything, so.
Yeah, there is this area right in here, in the green, I don't think it shows up on yours, but right above the road, there's some, it looks like a little triangular area, that's our retention area and stuff, so we're collecting water, you know, before it goes into the Arroyo.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Any more questions from Strangton?
And this, this is going to be concrete and not asphalt.
Oh, okay, thank you, Mr. Ayton.
Thank you.
Let's go ahead, let's go ahead into item B, grant reports, Ms. Andrea.
Good evening, President Gondola, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board. We've got a good grants report this month, we have finished our evaluations, reports that were due for our quarterly reports for our two Department of Defense grants, and we've started looking at them, and we've met our goals, which is very good, including reading for our special needs kids, we exceeded that goal, so we're very happy about that. In our Army Youth Program in your neighborhood, APEN, we did end up getting that contract refunded, so we are hiring a college student worker to come in and input attendance for the after-school program for that and, and support us in that program. And then, while we were out on break, we were published in a Jennifer Jones, who does our homeless, supports our homeless population, has done a lot of work throughout Texas, and in the Waco News, Waco Newsletter of Seeds of Hope, they published a piece, a very nice piece, on the work she's done for our homeless population. On grants submitted, we submitted several more this past month, we did the Texas Workforce Commission, the Equipment Grant, which was for the three high schools that I mentioned last month, for the dental assistant and automotive services where, that was submitted, as well as our Impact Aid for children with severe disabilities. We, we had, again, two children that qualified under that grant, and that is a definite, they will fund that one, we, we know that's funded. Grants awaiting notification, Win Academy, we're still having conversations with the Kellogg Foundation for that one, so hopefully, we'll know something by the next board meeting. And the other three, on this page, we have not heard anything from. On this next one, the Dodea, the FY16 Military Connected Grant Program, we just got a notification yesterday that we were awarded, and so they are wanting to start August 1st, so we've got to turn around some detailed information right away with them. Okay, applications in progress, we're starting in on Impact Aid, both the amendment and for the 16, 17 year, we've got a, hopefully, we can get another 100,000 out of the last year's amendment of getting back more applications, and then we'll start in on this next year, we'll be starting. Okay, and then a couple other applications that were funded, the APEN that I mentioned before, they're going to give us another 100,000, and then Wells Fargo gave us a small one to take Win Academy kids to UTEP for a college and career excursion. And that concludes my report, unless you have any questions.
Any questions? Thank you, Mrs. Andrea. Let's go to item C, SISD Health and Wellness Program, Mrs. Macias.
President Gondola, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board, I'm here today to share with you our health and wellness campaign, this is our last part of it, before we get into 2016, 17, we're going to implement it with fidelity and excitement, and I have my team here, and they don't want to come yet, but they're going to come, and with me I have Ms. Rebecca Madrid, Mr. Bob Amador, managers of our district nurses, we have Ms. Tami McCabean, Director of Guidance and Counseling, Ms. Rachel Tarango, Volunteer Coordinator, and Ms. Linda Maturino, Wellness and, our Wellness Coordinator, are they there? All right, they're there. So, Dr. Espinoza's vision of forming a partnership between all SISD health and wellness stakeholders, i.e. child nutrition services, physical education, guidance and counseling, school health, faculty and staff health, and community health, we're officially here, ready to go, and we want to share something really special with you. It's coming. That was a cute thing.
If there's, you're mad, upset, there's conflict between people, when you go in the, the counselor suite, there's a lot of positivity in that room.
I feel great for having Ms. Boggs, because, well, she just helps you out very well.
Sometimes, we are the first people who they see in terms of having access to medical health care, so we, as school nurses, play an integral role in the primary health of
Team SISD is committed to providing students a comprehensive approach to health and wellness. SISD school counselors and nurses work diligently to educate children by supporting them with a variety of health screenings and counseling to ensure they continue achieving academic success. The Team SISD School Health Program helps promote, protect, maintain, and improve student, staff, and community health. Team SISD school nurses work with students, parents, educators, and community members to offer resources that will help students advance through various stages of life. Health services offered by SISD nurses include health screenings, referrals for parents, networking with other community providers, health promotion education, and injury and disease prevention education.
It's very important that we screen the kids for hearing and for vision, because sometimes kids may be struggling in school, and it could be as a result because they cannot see properly or they cannot hear properly, so school nurses play a very integral role in making sure that their academics are not affected because of a problem that they may have.
Team SISD counselors work with students in three different domains, academic, social-emotional, and career awareness. Counselors deliver a wide variety of lessons to students both individually and in group settings to teach strategies, techniques, and interventions when dealing with conflict.
I think it's important to start early and when they're young, because if they're able to learn these skills and how to manage and how to deal with these issues, as they continue to grow, they're able to apply them.
As they come into school, we want to make sure that they are feeling comfortable in the classroom, if there's an issue that they're experiencing, that we are here to support that social-emotional issue, so that the student can actually sit in the classroom and be able to focus fully on the content that the teacher is explaining to them.
The School Health Advisory Committee is a group of individuals who represent segments of the community. Appointed by the Team SISD School Board of Trustees to serve the district and provide advice on coordinated school health programming and its impact on student health and learning.
My main focus and reasoning behind being involved in the menu committee was to make sure that the kids were getting, you know, healthy foods, that there was a different variety of foods for the kids.
There's programs out there that are free, that want to come in and educate the community about, about health, about diet, about nutritious food, about physical activity. So, what has it done? It's brought up the awareness, awareness for the parents, awareness for the administrators, the schools, that we, in essence, have developed, that we want to go into more of a healthy campaign for Socorro Independent School District.
Along with student health, Team SISD and Cigna are also committed to employee health by providing and coordinating a variety of employee health wellness campaigns, wellness seminars, health fairs, health screenings, and other health events and activities.
If the employees are healthy, then it also creates a healthier community, not only it helps the teachers or, you know, any other SISD employees, but it also helps the kids because it creates a healthier community.
In the 2015, 2016 school year, Team SISD provided more than 14,650 hearing screens, 16,900 vision screens, 3,600 scoliosis screens, and 6,100 acanthosis screenings in students. Of those screenings, 439 students were screened as a potential for pre-diabetes. Of those students, a majority were seen by a doctor. Of that majority of students, 38 of them are currently receiving treatment by a doctor for their continual healthy living. In the 2015, 2016 school year, Team SISD provided a total of 9,070 lessons of counseling with students, to include 687 total groups seen by Team SISD counselors.
There's always a, a way to solve something without yelling, violence, or anger, pretty much, you can just talk about it.
That's really important, to make them feel comfortable, to make sure that they know that there's somebody here to support them. In school, they're not only learning how to learn, how to read, how to write, they're also learning how to be healthy, and that's one thing, that's one of the take-home messages I like to keep for all my kiddos here at the school, is I want to teach them to be healthy, I want to teach them to take control of their health, and that way, they can be healthy adults.
If you would like to learn more about Team SISD's health and wellness campaign,
As you can see through the video and all the bullet points over there, health services is involved with all the departments regarding wellness, with PE, with our guiding and counseling, with our CRNS, with our, with our volunteer programs, and also with our Cigna Health Wellness Coordinator, so we play an important role, and we're really excited this year that this is going to go on.
Our SISD counselors do work with students in three areas, academic, career, and social-emotional. Social-emotional, we see, is one of our most important. We deliver strategies and interventions to them through guidance lessons in the classroom, through small groups, and through individual counseling with them, teaching them things like conflict resolution, problem solving, teaching them how to communicate, and that interpersonal effectiveness. We also work with teachers, and we work with staff as well, with parents, teaching them strategies and interventions to help their students as well, and we have two new programs that we're doing, we created a self-help, self-care program based off of need in our district on stress management and anxiety that we're seeing a lot in our students, and so we've created modules for lessons for our students, our teachers, and our parents, and we also have an ethical consulting committee, where our counselors are getting trained by the American School Counsel Association to be an ethical specialist, so we're always making sure that we're following ethical guidelines when we're working with our students.
SISD engages parents and community with opportunities to participate in decisions which impact every aspect of student health. At district level, parent input is valued through active involvement in various committees. At campuses, parents participate in activities offered to students throughout the year and connect monthly through healthy newsletters. Involving parents and community ensures that family values are reflected in health, education,
Good evening, so as your Cigna On-Site Wellness Coordinator, I will contribute to a healthier Team SISD by increasing employee health awareness, improving benefit plan utilization with a defined communication strategy to set the benchmark for the 2016 year with different health activities and events.
Thank you, any questions for our healthier Team SISD?
Any questions?
No, sir.
Comments?
That was awesome!
It was great, absolutely.
And thank you so much for your hard work.
Thank you.
Let's go to item D, technology update, Mr. Rena.
Good evening, Mr. President Gondola.
All right. Members of the board, Dr. Espinoza.
Mr. Rena, show me your hands, show me, I thought you wrote it there.
Over a year and a half ago, we decided that we wanted to stop the process that would turn these into register our kids with our parents at our school district. Over, over a year ago, a half ago, we decided, me, myself, Ms. Madrid behind me, Lupi Luhan-
Rena, will you please bring up the mic?
Lupi Luhan, there you go, there you go. Ms. Madrid, back in Madrid, Hilda Miranda Liz Rios, we decided to go visit a couple of districts in South Texas that were using Tyler at the same time, and they were using also the online registration there. The three other districts that we looked at, one of them had 20,000 kids, the other one had 30,000 kids, the other one had 40,000 kids, which is Laredo. So, we visited those districts, and we went to see what issues they had when they were going through the process. Why did we do it? To simplify the process for parents when they register their kids. Again, we did, the PR department, when we went online in 2015, only with the eighth graders, we did a pilot with the eighth graders, it went well, so this year, we decided to go live with the entire school district. A lot of credit goes to Daniel, because he got the word out to the, to the community, through callouts and through the media, and we met with the media, and they did a lot of interviews to make sure that we made our parents aware that we're going online. First parent that registered was a drugant, her name was Daisy Sanchez, she registered her two kids, you know, she said it took five minutes, I believe her, but probably she was the first one in line. Why did we do it? Convenient, we're trying to save money, we're trying to improve the process, and to make the data more secure, no longer do we want to have where everybody brings their forms, I think in the old days, people, which was last year, people bring their forms, they would take it to the campus, sometimes they would get lost, so they have to redo all those forms again, and that's one of the other reasons that we did it. The process, what were the requirements for parents? One, they need to make sure that the primary information was correct, one, we needed to make sure that they have, another one is that they had their email account, and that's a question that Mr. Gondola asked me a year, a year and a half ago, how many parents are using the portal, and we said maybe 20,000. And we said maybe 20%. Well, now, 100% are going to be used. The first phase, we needed to make sure that we did take care of the duplicates. There was parents that had two kids and they had different, maybe, addresses, so we needed to make sure we did that phase one. The other one, we needed to make sure that we provided access to parents, and the dates are there during the February and April. Make sure that we gave them the accounts with their email account. And the third phase, we needed to make sure during March and May that we trained our campuses. As you can see, that's a timeline that we use, and I'm going to look at my nose because I can't see. During the month of October, when we started the phase, we did the training here, which was a campus training. During the month of October to January, we did the duplicate where we trained the clerks at each campus how to link all the children together to one account, to one parent. We did the OLA training for the testing and feedback during the month of January through March. And if you look at the last one, we went live during the month, the last month, which is the month of May. Who did we get input from? We got input from every department here, administrative services, the nurses, the HR registers at each campus, and the CNS employees. We also trained by feeder pattern. This time, we no longer trained, brought all the campuses in. Since the children were at a feeder pattern, we are now training by feeder pattern. And also, our team. Our team had to make sure that all the forms were created, and we took our time there. We were doing it in February and March, and then in October, we started giving them. Now, was there a cost savings? Yes, if you look at the cost savings, we did save the money. We did ask for data from the campuses. We did save money in supplies and in postage, and you can see the cost there. We probably saved close to $60,000 in all the savings that we had. The software did cost us $35,000. And every week, Mrs. Miranda would send us an update of the status of each campus. We're now at close to week nine. The last time that we...the last report that we got was last week. We were 86%. We expect to be at 100% when we start school. Lessons learned. When we did the registration, I visited all the high schools when they were doing the registrations. We need to cut down at the high schools, a thing that I noticed. I'll give credit to El Dorado High School, they had four stations only. So, a parent started the registration process to go take their utility bill. It only had four stations there, and I give them credit. There are still some campuses, some of the high schools that had 13, 14 stations still. You know, that's not a way to progress. So, we already talked to some of the...to all the principals, and next year, we're going to cut down the number of stations where they're all equivalent across the district. We need to make...I think one of the concerns that was brought up by some parents was we need to have an opt-out, so when parents are filling out the forms, that they don't have to select what income they're making. We couldn't do it this year, but next year, they'll have that option. They don't have to display their salaries. And again, as I visit the campuses, we need to make sure that parents are waiting indoors instead of outdoors when they're doing registration. Most of the credit goes to everybody, but Hilda Miranda and her team did a great job in making sure this process was done, and the PR department. They helped us a lot in getting the word out to the community. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Let's go to item number seven, Consent Agenda. Is there any items to be pulled out of Consent Agenda?
Yes. President Gondra, administration would like to pull Agenda Item 7B, 7B, Employment Personnel.
Pull it completely or just out to...
Completely. Mr. Compoia?
We would want to pull that item just to delete one name. You all should have received the additional list or the revised list on your chairs.
Okay, thank you.
And that name's already been...
Yes, the name has already been redacted.
Any other items? Need a motion?
Motion to approve Consent Agenda with exception of Item 7B.
Hold on.
There's the item... F2B is...
Which one?
This is ABL...
2B?
...on the program that...
Item 2B.
F2B?
72B.
Oh.
Yeah, I will. Okay, F2B. Please pull F2B.
Okay. Motion to approve Consent Agenda with the exception of Items 7B and F2B.
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Nakira, second by Mr. Rodriguez. Any further discussion?
Discussion. Just so that I'm clear, on this item that we're pulling out, because there's a list of employees that we're offering employment, I mean, if we pull it out completely, we're not going to be able to approve this list at all. Are we asking to postpone this list to later in the agenda, or we're going to see it next month?
No, we're pulling the list, and you all should have received the updated list with one name redacted. The employee resigned to go to another district.
Okay, so then we won't have an Agenda item to approve the remaining list, right?
Yes, you're going to prove it tonight.
So, there's no problem with pulling out the name, and we can still approve it?
That's fine. You're still going to prove it to separate the house, because we need to make it clear to the record that you didn't pay.
Okay, okay, I'm good.
Any further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Item 7B, Consider Approval of Employment of Personnel. Mr. Compoia?
Administration is recommending to consider approval of the list as provided with redacting the name Thomas Sigala from the list.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion made by Mr. Guerra, and second by Mrs. Nakira. Any discussion?
No.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, let's go to item 2B.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion made by Mrs. Rodriguez.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Nakira. Any further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And I abstain. I work for the college.
And one abstention. Let's go down to item number eight, New Business. Consider Approval of Community Eligibility Provision, CEP, for the 2016-17 school year. Ms. Chanowski?
Good evening. Good evening, President Gondra, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board. I want to thank you for allowing me to speak to you this evening about community eligibility provision. We do have a PowerPoint that we'll be showing. Community eligibility provision is a program allowing schools to offer free meals to all students at qualifying schools. Overview of USDA Community Eligibility Provision, which in short is called CEP. The overview is that CEP provides additional federal resources for economically disadvantaged schools, provides free lunch to all students at qualifying campuses with no applications needed, eliminates burden of collecting applications administratively and for our parents, and it also reduces administrative costs. Overview of the Requirements. USDA requires a minimum percentage of identified students in the school year prior to implementing the CEP. That percentage rate is 40% of students that are identified as directly certified, meaning they...their household may participate in or does participate in receiving some sort of benefits: food stamps, TANF, things like that. They serve...as a requirement, we are required to serve free lunch and breakfast to all students at the participating schools. Household applications for free and reduced meals are not collected whatsoever at those schools that participate. If a district elects and chooses to...school districts may elect that the whole district will participate, a group of schools, or individual schools. Based on the information that we have for our district, we would not recommend the whole district. It would not be financially prudent to do that. Eligible schools or groups must have an identified student percentage of at least 40%, and it does require state approval and board approval. The process. The process is that once a campus is identified with the 40% of students, then we multiply...they multiply it times 1.6. Once you get that 1%, it tells you how much of those participating students will be at a free reimbursement rate for that campus. The remaining percentage of total meals served is reimbursed at a paid rate. As you know, we have free rate, reduced rate, and paid rate at our campuses now. It will eliminate the reduced rate completely at the campuses that we're recommending community eligibility. Any meal costs in excess of the total federal reimbursement must be covered through non-federal sources. So, if we were to identify a school that maybe has 85% free and then the rest paid, and if there were any shortfall, it would be from non-federal sources, meaning maybe our à la carte sales, or our catering sales, or monies from the district. Eligible schools or group of schools must have an identified percentage of 40%. A new identified student percentage may be established each year of a four-year cycle. So, if we were to...if you were to vote on community eligibility tonight and approve it, we start with the base year from last year, and we can continue in the program for four years. If the eligibility improves, then we can always start a new base year, so it can continue on for four years at that point. We can cancel at any time for the following school year. So, if we see that it's not financially prudent, or that it's just not benefiting the community as we're hoping for, then we can cancel the program and just start collecting applications and proceeding with the program as we normally do. Proposed schools that we are asking to participate in community eligibility are Campesina Elementary, Mission Ridge, Robert Rojas, Es Contrillas, Keys Elementary, Desert Wind Pre-K8, and Socorro Middle. Based on these schools and the data that we have received from the state, these schools, every student will eat for free, and we will get reimbursed at the free rate for every school that comes in and eats with...for every student that comes and eats with us. So, that rate is $3.07 per meal that we will receive. The paid rate and the collection of monies, all of that will no longer be needed whatsoever. Administration recommends that these seven schools be allowed to participate in the community eligibility provision, and we know that this is going to be a true benefit to our students and our community, and I thank you for your consideration. May I entertain any questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Now, motion made by Mrs. Nakira, second by Mr. Guerra. Any further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mrs. Nakira.
That is awesome. Thank you.
Let's go to item B, Consider Approval of Local Policy. Mrs. Macias.
President Gondra, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board, I'm here to ask for approval for Policy FB as presented.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Ayub, second by Mrs. Rodriguez. Any further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mrs. Nakira.
That is awesome. Thank you.
Let's go to item B, Consider Approval of Local Policy. Mrs. Macias.
President Gondra, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board, I'm here to ask for approval for Policy FB as presented.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Ayub, second by Mrs. Rodriguez. Any further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Macias. Now, let's go to item nine, Executive Session. This meeting is to be closed for a consultation with legal counsel to discuss personal and real estate matters for discussion regarding parent level three complaint filed by HD to consider evaluation for internal auditor curriculum and instruction, and finance to consider administrative recommendations for Director of Human Resources, Employee Benefits at Risk Management, Principal at Socorro Middle School, Assistant Principals at Eastlake High School II, and Pebble Hills High School, and STEM Career and Technology Education Facilitator under Texas Education Code Section 551.071, 551.072, and 551.074. The time is 7:05. Back out of executive session at 9:04. 10A Decision and Possible Action Regarding Parent Level Three Complaint Filed by HD. Mr. Blanco.
Thank you, Board President Gondra, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board. Steve Blanco, legal counsel for the district. Last month, you received the initial set of documentation and summary regarding parent complaint filed by Ms. HD. We're using your initials. Tonight, you had the opportunity to further discuss and to make a determination of whether you wanted to take any additional action or receive any additional information. And at this time, we would recommend that the board not take any action on this matter and allow the level three decision from the hearing officer to stand as is.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Well, that's no action. There's no motion for... There's no motion. We will take action on...
Take action.
Okay. Let's go to item B, Consider Approval of Evaluation for Internal Audit, Others Curriculum and Instruction.
Motion to approve.
Was there a recommendation?
Do we have to read it out?
No, we just... No, we don't have to read it out. Oh, I'm sorry. I was looking at the hires. We don't. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion made by Mrs. Nakira, second by Mrs. Rodriguez. Any further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved. Number two, Finance.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Nakira, second by Mr. Ayub. Any further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item C, Consider Approval of Administrative Recommendations, Dr. Espinoza. Director of Human Resources, Employee Benefits at Risk...Risk Management, sorry.
Yes, President Gondra and members of the board, at this time, administration recommends Mr. Mario Carmona to assume all the roles and the responsibilities as Director of Employee Benefits.
Motion to approve. Second.
First has been made by Mr....
Gonzalez.
Mr. Gonzalez, I'm sorry, and second by Mr. Ayub. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Principal at Socorro Middle School.
Yes, President Gondra and members of the board, at this time, administration recommends Ms. Nadia de la Rosa to assume all the roles and the responsibilities as Principal at Socorro Middle School.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Rodriguez, second by Mr. Ayub. Any further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number three, Assistant Principals, Eastlake High School.
Yes, President Gondra and members of the board, at this time, administration recommends Mr. Alfredo Gomez as the Assistant Principal at Eastlake High School.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Nakira, second by Mr. Gonzalez. Any further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next one, item B, Pebble Hills High School.
Yes, President Gondra and members of the board, at this time, administration recommends Mr. David Herrera to assume all the roles and the responsibilities as Assistant Principal at Pebble Hills High School.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Rodriguez, second by Mrs. Nakira. Any further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number four, STEM Career and Technology Education Facilitator.
Yes, President Gondra and members of the board, at this time, administration recommends Mr. Orlando Hairston to assume the roles and responsibilities as the Career and Technology Education Facilitator.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Ayub, seconded by Mrs. Rodriguez. Any further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. There be further more items on the agenda for this group vote? We are adjourned at 9:08.